I believe we have everyone who were expecting to be on time. So we'll call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, February 23rd, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alders Evers.
Here.
Alders Evers is present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present. Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Alder Hennig.
Present.
Alder Hennig is present. Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Lemer.
Here.
Alder Martin is excused. Alder Prestigiacomo.
Here.
Alder Prestigiacomo is present. Alder Rommel. Alder Rommel is present. Alder Skidmore.
Here.
Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Tierney.
Here.
Alder Tierney is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Wajaya.
Here.
Alder Wajaya is present. Alder Albas.
Present.
Alder Albas is present. Alder Berus.
Here.
Alder Berus is present. Alder Balday will be late. Alder Bedar.
Present.
Alder Bedar is present. Alder Carter. Sorry, President Carter.
Present.
President Carter is present. Madam Mayor, of course.
Thank you. Can I have our tech facilitator read the instructions, please?
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And just add that we are asking everyone, both members of the body and staff and anyone that here is here, registered to speak with us tonight, to be respectful of everyone else in this virtual room, and feel free to be hard on systems, but respect people, and to refrain from using profanity. Just remind us at every meeting that we're doing our best to do the city's business here. And then we will start with suspension of the rules. President Carter.
Move suspension of the rules. Suspension of the rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for Items designated on the agenda.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended, and we will go to item one, which is led to our 64270, an honoring resolution honoring those who have lost their lives and those who survived COVID-19 and declaring March 1st, 2021, a day of remembrance and recovery. And if I can get a motion, President Carter.
Move approval of item one, 64270.
Moved and seconded, and with the body's permission, I will read the resolution. Whereas COVID-19 or SARS-CoV-2 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas Madison had its first case of COVID-19 on February 5th, 2020, marking the 12th case in the nation. And whereas to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, observance of public health orders to social distance and stay at home created challenges for Madison's small businesses, workers, schools, and other important institutions which are working to comply with limited resources. And whereas school districts, teachers, students, and parents are grappling with the challenges of distance learning and working to prevent any potential learning loss due to not being in person. And whereas in the absence of adequate federal guidance, local and state governments, public health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to the rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers in the public and private sector have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on the low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address locally and as a nation. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual, and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown, as many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas more than 2.42 million people worldwide and over 500,000 in the United States have lost their lives due to COVID-19, more than the number of Americans lost to World War II, and in Madison alone, more than 98 lives have been lost to this deadly virus. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and their surrounding community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Madison joins Dane County and the U.S. Conference of Mayors in remembering and mourning the loss of our friends and neighbors to COVID-19, and be it further resolved, in honor of those who have lost their lives and those who survived COVID-19 and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus, we declare March 1st, 2021, a day of remembrance and recovery. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item one and move on to item number two. And as we take up item number two, and actually, President Carter, let's just get a motion on this before we start reading.
Move adoption of item 264274.
Vice President Albus.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and I'm going to ask the staff that are on the call with us, please to go ahead and turn their cameras on so that we can recognize you throughout the course of this resolution and give you virtual rounds of applause. This one is a long one, and we are taking turns reading it. So on item 64274, marking one year of the COVID-19 pandemic and saluting essential workers, we will start with Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas it has been over one year since the first case of COVID-19 was diagnosed in Madison, and these past 12 months have led to a state of unprecedented social and economic disruption and created tremendous challenges for our healthcare system, government, businesses, schools, families, workers, retirees, and diverse communities in countless ways. And whereas the City of Madison recognizes and appreciates the essential workers in the private sector, including grocery, retail, and restaurant workers, food service, food pantry, and agricultural workers, warehouse, postal and delivery workers, cab drivers, industrial and commercial workers, journalists, communications and IT workers, critical manufacturing, utility and construction workers, custodians and janitorial workers, and countless others who have continued working at jobs where they were exposed to the public and therefore at greater risk. And whereas the City of Madison recognizes and appreciates the tireless efforts of direct care workers for the elderly and the disabled, teachers, childcare and youth program workers, special education aides, home healthcare providers, nursing home and congregate care workers, community center employees, and the countless unsung heroes who have delivered critical services to families and children under challenging conditions. And whereas every City of Madison department and division contributed to the determined effort to protect public health, support the local economy, and provide crucial city services to residents, organizations, and businesses. And I pass to Alder Bedar.
Whereas drivers and other employees of Metro Transit have been on the front line of this pandemic since day one, providing safe transportation throughout the city without pause and initially without change. And Metro employees have worked to transport homeless individuals from nighttime to day shelters and also maintained a route structure so essential employees could get to and from their jobs throughout the city. And whereas the Streets Division employees were undeterred by these extraordinary times, and they continue to provide exceptional service for Madison residents. Crews adapted to new schedules, new procedures, and new restrictions, all while performing their essential work for our community. From snowplowing roads this winter to sweeping them this past summer, to collecting recyclables and trash, to maintaining the health of our vibrant urban forests, the Streets Division workforce showed they can be relied upon to meet the moment and exceed our expectations. And whereas information technology rapidly transitioned many city employees to a telework environment, continuing effective customer service, developed a virtual environment for the city's legislative process, and supported 1,875 hours of virtual meetings, increased online permitting and inspection processes, redesigned the city website to feature COVID-19 information, collaborated with Public Health Madison and Dane County on two COVID-19 data dashboards, and continued to build and maintain the city's technology infrastructure and fiber network to support increased network traffic and maintain security best practices. And whereas the City Clerk's Office worked incredibly long hours to provide a total of five safe and fair elections by April of this year, often developing unique and innovative ways such as democracy in the park and establishment of drop-off ballot boxes throughout the city to allow people to vote safely. The office has also recruited thousands of intrepid poll workers and secured new polling locations, and has remained open for business licensing throughout the pandemic. And I will pass it on to Alder Furman.
Whereas Madison Public Library has maintained its focus and innovation in service to the city by creating a new virtual library card, providing remote telephone reference, increasing online collections and databases, making materials available through curbside pickup or direct delivery, and despite the personal risks and pandemic conditions, opening their doors to public computing, demonstrating the resilience and dedication of the library staff and service to our community. And whereas the staff of the City Treasury has worked primarily in person throughout the pandemic to ensure that property tax, municipal services, housing, and licensing payments are processed accurately and on time. In addition, in addition to their normal duties, the staff and central payroll worked extra hours to onboard over 3,000 new poll workers for the 2020 elections and took on more responsibilities processing and verifying work share hours throughout the city. And whereas many Planning Division employees were asked to help address the city's emerging needs related to the pandemic, and employees had to learn new skills and work in unplanned ways to continue their fast-paced work in a virtual setting to support a record-setting year for development proposals in our growing city. And whereas the Economic Development Division continued work on real estate projects critical to supporting private development and private infrastructure throughout the pandemic, quickly setting up new ways supporting our local business community, most notably through the Small Business Equity and Recovery COVID Grant Program, and led a team of staff from across the city to launch the successful Streetery Program so that restaurants could safely serve their patrons. And I hand it off to Alder Lemer.
Whereas the Madison Fire Department played a lead role in the emergency response and has continued to provide high-quality patient care to every resident and visitor during the COVID-19 pandemic, many of the members of the department went beyond what is normally expected to ensure that the community and their coworkers continue to maintain safety while fighting the virus. The members of the Madison Fire Department quickly adapted to changes in operational and service delivery policies to ensure community safety. And whereas employees with Community Development Division worked tirelessly with staff from around the city and nonprofit partners to create safe childcare options for the city's essential workers and to rapidly seek more expansive shelter options for our vulnerable homeless populations. Through their work, homeless men were housed safely, at first at the Warner Park Community Center, and now in the city's former fleet facility as a permanent shelter is identified and pursued. And whereas the CDA Housing Operations Division has protected CDA residents from the pandemic by maintaining CDA properties in a safe and socially distant manner, and have continued operation of the Section 8 and public housing programs despite the challenges of remote contact with clients. And the Building Inspection Division played an important role in pandemic planning and continued in-person inspection services throughout the pandemic, and was the first agency to reopen in-person counter services for zoning and plan review services. And whereas Parking Division staff ensured continuous, safe, and timely service to the community with customer service and field staff reporting to work daily to keep facilities clean and provide necessary in-person customer support through the efforts of redeployed parking cashiers who took on new duties to support public health efforts, elections, streets yard waste, drop-off sites, and parks, and demonstrated a deep understanding for a variety of parking needs to support residents and businesses, including the creation of curbside pickup areas, collaboration on the Streetery Program, and waiver of parking fees, daily parking rate reductions in public parking garages, and the suspension of various on-street parking restrictions. And I will hand it off to President Carter.
And whereas workers from multiple departments mailed tens of thousands of absentee ballots during the pandemic, fire and parks hosted ballot drop-off locations and kept them free of snow. The Finance Department Administrative Support Team hired and scheduled 3,000 new election officials to work the polls. Public health developed safety precautions, recommendations for the city's absentee voting sites and polling locations. Parks, Madison Public Library, the Manona Terrace, Fire, the Madison Senior Center, Fleet Services, Engineering opened their doors to voters during the pandemic. Information technology helped monitor and protect the city's election administration, cybersecurity. Madison City Channel made it possible for thousands of election officials to participate in training webinars, and the Madison Police Department provided election security recommendations and help to secure the ballots. The City Attorney's Office provided guidance through an unprecedented series of election challenges, and the Manona Terrace hosted the presidential recount. And whereas the Building Inspection Division continued in-person inspection services throughout the pandemic and was the first agency to reopen in-person counter services for zoning and planning review services. And whereas the Madison Police Department committed to provide public safety and service to the community during COVID-19 pandemic as frontline personnel tirelessly serving the citizens of Madison 24/7 by providing core services. In addition, the men and women of MPD have worked hard to facilitate the expression of community members' First Amendment's rights while protecting public safety, maintaining a safe environment while fighting a pandemic under these circumstances is challenging, but is necessary to help reduce the impact of COVID-19 in our community. And whereas Traffic Engineering Division assisted with COVID-19 response and recovery through programs such as Shared Streets, Streetery, Curbside Pickup, and Active Traffic Management based on changing traffic conditions, all while maintaining all critical traffic infrastructures, handing record number of public requests, and launching the Vision Zero Initiative. And I pass it on to Alder Rommel.
Thank you. Whereas the Madison Parks Division has continued to provide a high-quality park system of more than 5,000 acres to residents throughout the pandemic, as people relied on park staff to provide a safe environment to enjoy the mental, physical, and social benefits that parks provide. Staff have responded to the community's needs with purpose by adapting all aspects of its operations, planning, and community services, including the Goodman Pool, Warner Park Community Recreation Center, four golf courses, Olbret Gardens, dog parks, lake access locations, public restrooms, trails and bike paths, disc golf courses. And whereas the Engineering Division maintained public infrastructure consistently through the pandemic, especially in the field, braving pandemic pressures and risks. Engineering staff maintained sanitary and stormwater systems, continued designing and building streets, bike paths, and city facilities, helped support other city agencies with maintaining high standards of sanitizing and preventative efforts in the face of COVID. Engineering crews also responded to the urgent need for a temporary men's shelter at two different locations. And whereas Madison Water Utility staff are devoted to fulfilling their mission to supply high-quality water for consumption and fire protection regardless of circumstances, including on weekends and holidays, during frigid cold temperatures, searing summer heat, and a raging pandemic. Plus, employees of Madison Water Utility tirelessly and proudly kept pumps maintained and operating, repaired main breaks and failing valves, serviced meters and hydrants, replaced or installed new water mains, performed plumbing inspections, collected and tested water samples, and professionally responded to customer concerns, all in a safe and socially distant manner. And I hand it off to Mayor Rose Conway.
Whereas we recognize and appreciate the work of the many other workers and city offices that, under challenging circumstances, served the public without pause. These include the City Assessor's Office, the Office of the City Attorney, Civil Rights, Common Council staff, Fleet Services, Finance, and Manona Terrace. All owe a debt of gratitude to the Human Resources Department, which repurposed hundreds of city workers to new tasks, and the Employee Assistance Program, which provided high-quality support services to staff upon request. And whereas many of these hard-working, private, and public-sector workers risked exposure to the virus in the performance of their duties, yet never paused in ensuring that essential and often life-sustaining services continued without interruption. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the mayor and common council of the City of Madison express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to these dedicated workers and employees who are uplifting our community and our economy and positioning our city for a more rapid recovery by working tirelessly throughout the COVID-19 pandemic to deliver essential services. And I invite the entire council to join me in a virtual round of applause for all of our staff and all of our essential workers throughout the City of Madison, including and especially those who are with us here tonight or who are watching. And thank you to all of our readers. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number two? Seeing none, we record a unanimous vote in favor. And I would ask unanimous consent to take up item 118 now, which is our award tonight. Is there any objection to doing so? Seeing no objection, I would like to hand over the Zoom to Corinda Rainey Moore.
Hold on.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi, everyone. So this presentation of the 2021 Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award is by the City of Madison Equal Opportunities Commission. The EOC, Department of Civil Rights, Equal Opportunities Division, to Tamara Tammy Fleming. The Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award honors the late Reverend James C. Wright, who served as Executive Director of the Equal Opportunities Commission from its inception in 1968 until his retirement in 1992. The award is given to an individual who best exemplifies the Reverend Wright's dedication and compassion for civil and human rights and conducts their daily life consistent with these values. The Equal Opportunities Commission has selected Tamara Tammy Fleming as the recipient of the 2020 award. Tammy has shown our community how she goes above and beyond for the homeless population in Madison. She is viewed by those who work with her as a shining light during these unprecedented times. Tammy has dedicated her life towards helping the homeless population to ensure members of the population have resources through the night or sharing an ear or when needed, and for years treating everyone with dignity and respect. There are not enough words that can describe how Tammy positively impacts our community. With this award and for keeping in the tradition of what Reverend Wright stood for in our community, the Equal Opportunities Commission, Department of Civil Rights, Equal Opportunities Division, would like to honor you, Tammy, and say thank you for your compassion, helping people get their basic human needs met. You are a champion in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Corinda, and congratulations, Tammy. I hope you can see the round of applause that you're getting, and I invite you to say a few words if you'd like.
I'm extremely humbled and honored. I don't know what else I can say. This community gives its heart, and I've never... And I've never lived in a community like this before that has pulled together to help so many people. And just listening to the resolution before me, I feel humbled to be included among servants of this community.
Thank you and congratulations on an incredibly well-deserved award. And thank you for all of the work that you do for our community.
Thank you.
So I don't know if we do need one, but just in case, let's have a motion. President Carter?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, it's so recorded. And congratulations again, Tammy. Thank you so much, and thank you, Corinda, for joining us tonight to present the award. Another round of applause for our award winner. All right. That takes us to early public comment, of which I believe we have none. And so we will move on to the consent agenda. President Carter?
Yes, the consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listed for each item except: one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; and three, items which older persons have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. Items, agenda items four through seven are public hearing items. The following are extra-majority items. Item 46, Legisar 63918. Item 49, Legisar 63974. Consent agenda items with additional recommendations as noted. Item 13, 63535. Recommended action is to refer to the Board of Building Code, Fire Code, and Licensing Appeals. Item 14, 63536. Recommended action is refer to the Board of Building Codes, Fire Code, Licensing Appeals. Item 15, 63538. Recommended action, refer to the Board of Building Codes, Fire Code, Licensing Appeals. Item 16, 63550. Refer to the Board of Building Codes, Fire Codes, Licensing, and Appeals. Agenda items part of the consent agenda without additional recommendation. Item 53. Recommended action is refer to the Public Safety and Review Committee. Item 63. Referral to the Urban Design Commission. And I believe, nope, it was the Urban Design Commission. Item 65. Referral to the Common Council Executive Committee. That's Legisar 64269. Item 75, 64254. Additional referrals to Downtown Coordinating Committee. Items for exclusion is 59, 62957. And then also items introduced from the floor for referral is 6342. And I think that's, oh, there is a, go ahead.
We have a registrant on item 53, so that will be excluded from the consent agenda as well. Are there additional exclusions from the consent agenda?
I don't.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Item 63324. Just to have staff explain the impact of that.
Alder, what agenda number is that?
633.
That's the Legisar number, Alder? What's the agenda number?
Oh. I'll have to give that back to you with that one.
51.
Item number 51. Thank you. All right. Alder Skidmore?
Could I request a referral of item 63 to the Finance Committee?
An additional referral to Finance for item 63. Are there any additional referrals?
I have one.
President Carter?
Yes, 64342, additional referral to CCEC.
And 64342, that's the item for introduction?
Yes.
Also to CCEC. All right, any other exclusions, referrals, sponsorships, recusals? Alder Campbell?
I'd like to be marked as being recused from item number 58, please.
The clerk will recuse Alder Campbell from number 58. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. I would like to be added as a cosponsor of the, and I don't have the one, the resolution that's going to be introduced from the floor. What item number is that, the very last one?
The Restorative Justice Program?
Yes, yes.
That's Legislative File 64342. The clerk will add you as a sponsor.
Thank you.
Vice President Abbas?
Thank you. Can you please add me as a sponsor, agenda item number 51 and 52?
Say again, Alder, that was, add you as a cosponsor on items 51 and?
50, 51, and 52. Three, 50, 50, 51, and 52.
I've got nods from the clerk on all of those. All right, Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Please add me as a sponsor to 64342, number, item number 118, the last one on our agenda.
The introduction from the floor, Alder? Yes.
Yes, yes.
The clerk has got that. All right.
Can you also add me to that one, too? Thank you.
All right, I'm just making sure you all have not lowered your hands. So Alder Evers, are you done? Yes. Yes, okay. Alder Harrington McKinney, no, everybody's good. All right, so any additional exclusions? Referrals, sponsorships, disclosures, or recusals? Alder Lummer?
Thank you. Can I add a referral for item 53 to the Economic Development Committee, please?
Alder, we're re-referring to public safety, so you want to EDC also? Okay. Item number?
Item number 63.
63?
Yes.
Okay. Also to EDC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Weheli?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you add me as a cosponsor, item 50 and 51?
I believe the clerk has got that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, one more time. Exclusions, referrals, cosponsorships, disclosures, recusals. Okay, so just so we're all on the same page, let me go through this again. I'm not going to do all the cosponsorships because I didn't write those down, but I know the clerk did. So items four through seven are public hearing. 46 and 49 are extra-majority items, so we'll record a unanimous vote. We have a number of consent agenda items with additional, I think they're all referrals. So 13, 14, 15, and 16 are all being re-refered to the Board of Building Code, Fire Code, and Licensing Appeals. 63 is being referred to Urban Design Commission, Finance, and Economic Development. 65 is being referred also to CCEC. 75 is being referred also to the Downtown Coordinating Committee. Then we have three items for exclusion, 51, 53, and 59. And we have one introduction from the floor right now, which is Legisar 64342, which will be referred to Public Safety Review, Equal Opportunities, and CCEC. All right, we also have some registrants here available for questions on consent agenda items. So I'll go through those quickly. On item number 30, we have city staff Mary Richards and Brent Pauba for any questions you might have. On number 33, David Hull, representing the purchaser of the land, is here for any questions. On item 42, Megan Schutz of Moving Out is available for questions. And on item 58, Ann Kovach, who is the Chair of our Transportation Commission, is here for questions. Are there questions for any of those registrants? Seeing none. Is there anything else on the motion of the consent agenda, which I will take President Carter to have moved? And Vice President Abbas?
Second, please.
To have seconded? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And we will go on to our public hearings. Starting with item number four, which is Legisar 61589. We'll open a public hearing on the substitute amending the city of Madison official map to establish mapped reservations for future streets and highways and the current and future city of Madison generally located to the north of Milwaukee Street between North Fair Oaks Ave. and West Corporate Drive, consistent with recommendations in the adopted Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. We have two registrants neither wishing to speak. Nathan Wattier of East Mifflin in opposition, representing Leo Ritter and Company, and David Ritter of New York City in opposition. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move adoption.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, the item is adopted. And we'll move on to item number five, which is Legisar 63433. It will open a public hearing on discontinuing and vacating multiple public unimproved street and alley rights of way within the plat of Village at Autumn Lake. We have no registrants, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item five. Brings us to item six, which is Legisar 63855. We will open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district and approve an amended general development plan and specific implementation plan at 7102 U.S. Highways 12 and 18. We have no registrants on item six. So we'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none. Item is adopted with conditions. Brings us to item number seven, which is Legisar 63856. It will open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district and approve an amended general development plan and specific implementation plan at 223 South Pickney Street. We have several registrants available for questions, starting with Erin Ebbent of Milwaukee in support, representing Coler Slater. Also Nate Gundrum of Minneapolis in support. And JP Beitler of Northbrook, Illinois in support, representing Beitler Real Estate Services LLC. And Evelyn Freeman of Williamson Street in support. None wishing to speak, first three available for questions. Are there any questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt with conditions.
Second to conditions.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none. That item is adopted with conditions. And that, my friends, is the end of our public hearings. So we will move to item number 51. And President Carter, let's get a motion, please.
Yep, getting there.
Me, too.
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Harrington McKinney, I believe you had questions for staff on this one.
My question was for the staff to talk about the impact of this to the rental community, the student community.
Let's see, we have George Hink here. Go ahead, George.
The impact is not that severe right now. The rent abatement hearings have been limited during the pandemic. The main reason this was suggested was to make it not necessary for renters who are up for rent abatement to come to our office to make payment, which was what they would basically have to do. So we are waiving the fee. We can handle all the other aspects online or over the phone. So this allows us to process applications and not have them actually come into the office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on item 51? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 51. And we'll move on to item number 53. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Brian Boland of Carver Street in opposition.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to speak in opposition to the motion to accept this report. I know there have been previous comments on the whole issue. I wanted to specifically address the purpose of this report was to include MPD de-escalation alternatives to the use of tear gas, and that alternatives include but not be limited to responsible mother.
I'm sorry, Brian. The number 53 is a report of chronic nuisance premises?
You know what, did I sign up for the wrong thing? Well, shoot. Sorry about that.
No worries. I believe the item you wish to testify on will be before us again, so you'll have another chance.
All right.
Thank you for joining. Thank you for joining. All right, so then on fifty-three, I believe Alder Heck, you had wanted to refer to PSRC. Is that correct? Yes, so President Carter, a motion to refer to the PSRC?
Move to refer to PSRC.
Second to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer to the Public Safety Review Committee. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is referred. And that brings us to item number fifty-nine. Sorry, getting there?
Me too.
Which is Legisdar six-two-nine-five-seven, new license for Stop &amp; Go fifteen-fifteen. And just to remind you, this is reconsideration and referred to this meeting. So it might actually benefit us, let's see. We do have registrants, so we'll start there, but I would ask staff to think about giving us just an overview of the item before we enter into discussion. But we'll start with registrants. So our first registrant is Joel Gratz of Fourth Street in opposition, to be followed by Eric Goldman.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I'll try to be brief since you've heard from me before. So I mostly want to highlight a few new pieces of information that I've shared with the council already. QuickTrip is on the record asserting that their application here meets all of the standards and requirements. As I've shared this weekend with you all, that actually is not true, and that to grant this license would certainly be to make an exception to both state statute and Madison ordinances, which prohibit Class A and B licenses within three hundred feet of a school. I've provided you a memo outlining, you know, the school situation and the distance and all of that. So you clearly have the authority to deny the license on these grounds alone, as that is the default position of the law, both state law and city law. I've spoken before, pardon me, and believe there are a number of reasons to deny this license beyond just the ordinance and the statute, though. My concerns I've spoken about before is that QuickTrip hasn't demonstrated through their actions here that they can be an excellent or even good or adequate community member. We know this both by their taking away a community benefit, the post office, but more significantly by how they acted in that business decision. They did so without any advance notice or discussion with the community, and that community or lack of communication prior to the decision really, you know, shows us how we may be able to expect them to communicate and deal with the community in the future retroactively rather than proactively. This really calls into the question how they'll deal with the neighborhood and the community, whether it's on alcohol license-related issues or something else in the future. An alcohol license is a privilege, not a right. The QuickTrip location, as my other memo shows, is in the densest area of licenses outside of the downtown campus area. It's the highest density area in a neighborhood. It's the highest density near middle schools and high schools, and that isn't even a close call when you look at the number of licenses within a half-mile radius of various licenses. That Shanks Corners area is the densest outside of the downtown campus area. It's actually almost twice, and in some cases, three times, the density compared to other neighborhoods and schools. So it's certainly reasonable to set high expectations for applicants, as we should here. And that's the, you know, the type of expectation I don't think has been met by QuickTrip. As policymakers, you must weigh the impact of a new license in a dense residential neighborhood with the risks and impacts of things like teen drinking against the community benefits and the quality of the applicant. There are plenty of concerns here that the impact outweighed the other factors, and again, approval would be making an exception to the rules. We need not grant every license in a dense area. If the applicant fails to live up to expectations, then denial is reasonable. Also note that the applicant already is licensed very close by at Third Street. They have a license in the area already, in that dense area that also is close to a school. So they don't need to be adding to the density when they already have the privilege to sell alcohol other places nearby. So I ask you to sustain your denial of this license.
Thank you. Our next addition is Eric Goldman of East Maine in support, representing QuickTrip, to be followed by David Ring.
Hi, yes, my name is Eric Goldman, and I am in fact the store leader at the location discussed. I'd like to first remind that we've been selling beer at that location for many, many years without incident. Obviously, the application for a new license due to the ownership changed to QuickTrip, and I would like to just let the council members know how I see the improvements that QuickTrip has brought to the store, to the location, and for the neighborhood. I'm very proud of the changes. I worked at that location when it was owned by Stop &amp; Go and was hired on at QuickTrip, and the differences are really noticeable for the neighborhood. The products we offer, fresh produce, fresh meats, fresh dairy, eggs, milk, things that we just were not able to offer previously, but because of the way QuickTrip, no fee ATM that was not present before, extra security cameras for safety purposes of the neighborhood, including exterior cameras that help law enforcement. And I will say personally, as a resident also of the neighborhood, it's been fantastic, the switch over from a employee standpoint. And we now have eleven coworkers at that location, almost all of whom are in the neighborhood, all of whom, because of QuickTrip, are making good wages and are financially, more financially stable than we have been in the past. Overall, you know, QuickTrip has been known as a terrific employer, and that's certainly been true. And the offerings to the neighborhood, I think, have been fantastic. We have a new outdoor signage that we're hopeful we can work with the neighborhood on promoting neighborhood events. We've had the good fortune of being able to donate many staples, bread, milk, eggs, to local organizations to help feed hungry people. We're incredibly proud of that. It's something that's really important to us. And so I speak, I speak in support of granting us a license to continue to do what we've done for many years just better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next addition is David W. Ring of Onalaska in support, representing QuickTrip.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight at the public hearing about our liquor license application at two-zero-zero-two in Bagel Street. The fact is, we have an established and proven track record of being a responsible alcohol license holder in the City of Madison, not only in the existing QuickTrip stores, but through the PDQ acquisition, as well as now the Stop &amp; Go stores. First, our liquor license application does meet all of the standards and requirements necessary for approval, which was reflected in the seven-to-zero unanimous vote on December sixteenth, twenty-twenty, by the Alcohol License Review Committee to approve our liquor license application. A liquor license is indeed a privilege and not a right, and our company's policies and coworkers trading are related to age-restricted products like alcohol and tobacco reflect the respect we have and the responsibility we assume by holding a liquor or tobacco license. This store is applying for a Class A beer and a Class A cider licenses, which will allow us to only sell beer, not wine or hard liquor, which are the exact same products as Eric Goldman stated, that were sold by the previous owners of Stop &amp; Go. In short, we are applying for a liquor license to sell the same alcoholic products at the same store location with the same store name that has existed in the sassy neighborhood for over thirty years. This is not a new store moving to the area, only different owners who have an established presence in the City of Madison, and again, a strong track record of performance and compliance with respect to alcohol laws. The issue and concern about alcohol density and the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, which is why our license was denied, I would like to speak about that very clearly. Our license application is for off-premise consumption. Our ownership of the store is the only thing that's changing, and none of these concerns were ever raised in the past thirty years the store operated under the previous ownership group. In fact, we are improving the health of the neighborhood through our healthier food options and cleaner store. We have improved the safety of the neighborhood by installing eighteen new security cameras, fourteen interior and four exterior, bringing the total number of security cameras to twenty-nine. We have also helped improve the welfare of the neighborhood by offering convenient take-home meals, a fresh meat case, daily delivery of fresh products like Eric spoke about, with bread, butter, eggs, milk, salads, and sandwiches, no fee TM, free air compressor, and contributing to the local project that involves the Red Caboose and Affordable Housing Project. With respect to the termination or removal of the post office, it was staffed by store employees, not the post office, and the vacation of the tenant in the laundromat adjacent to our store, former owner Andy Bowman and his management team made this decision a year before we even took ownership of the company. Andy Bowman is not here tonight, but was available on February second, and can confirm that if you would like to speak with him directly. Regarding the post office, we have had conversations with the Postal Service about placing a self-service kiosk in the store, or confirm those kiosks are proprietary to the conventional post office locations. And we have confirmed that we will be working to get a mailbox placed outside the store, has received some preliminary approval, and is continuing to move up the ladder to hopefully receive final approval in the next couple of weeks. Our store also sells stamps for the convenience of our guests. In summary, we respectfully ask for your support of our liquor license based on these facts and the requirements that we met through the LRC approval process. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Allison Lindsay-Morris of Bashford Ave. in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants tonight? Right, seeing none.
I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, President Carter, go ahead.
Yes, this is for David Ring. David, did I hear you correctly? Did you say that you're gonna, you're working on getting a kiosk in the store? A self-service postal kiosk in the store and a mailbox?
President Carter, no, we looked into the placement of a self-service kiosk, but we're not able to do that. It's only proprietary to conventional post office locations. But we are working, and I've had several conversations with the post office. There's two mailboxes at a different location based upon the volume, mill eight-one, and I talked to the customer service manager. He's approved it, but it has to go through, you know, a couple of layers of approval before it can finally be placed outside our store. So I would think that's going to happen some, I thought it would be happening, but now it's probably going to happen in the next, you know, fourteen to thirty days.
So you basically, you were here on the second, I believe, and you were here prior to that, and you've heard the concerns of the neighborhood. And I think one of the main concerns was the post office, if I remember correctly, and then some other things that they were worried about. So from those various conversations, you pursued trying to work with the post office on a compromise, correct?
Correct, yes. And if I also add, President Carter, I've talked to Katie Lyskey out of the Milwaukee area, and I know she's sent out requests for proposals to houses post office somewhere in the same neighborhood. There was another business that has expressed some interest in relocating the post office in their lobby area. I can't speak for them. I don't know where that, those discussions currently lie. But yeah, we, and to address Mr. Gratz's comments before, too, we sent out emails the November second and November twelfth. I've got documentation of the neighborhood expressing our interest to engage in conversation and participate in the neighborhood. I never heard anything back for a couple of weeks, which is fine, but that's just not accurate. We did reach out to them in terms of wanting to communicate with them and be involved. And I think, you know, we've demonstrated that we're good partners, we're good citizens in terms of being alcohol license holders in the City of Madison. And to my knowledge, I don't think we've had any service complaints to that store location, but the police department can certainly speak to that better than I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Are there other questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none, I'd like to turn to staff at this point. I'm not sure who would be most appropriate to just guide us through, since we're in reconsideration, what the questions are before us, what the standards are, and what the motion that President Carter will make might be. I'm going to look to Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jennifer Zilvey is on, and she can help with that.
Good evening.
There you are.
Hi. So since it's back before the council for reconsideration, it's either a motion to approve or deny the license. And when this was back before you in, I believe it was early February, or maybe that was even January, the first time, the record that was created at that meeting did not provide an adequate basis for denial of the license. This is a situation where the application was thoroughly vetted before the ALRC, and the ALRC unanimously recommended approval of the license. The Neighborhood Association also was in support of the license, and the police department had no objection to the license. So basically, everything that was before you was for approval of the license. There has been the issue of the post office, which is not, the fact that they are not going to have a post office there is not an adequate basis for a denial. And when I went back through the record, that seemed to be the biggest point of contention and the biggest reason why some neighbors were not in support of the license, because they weren't going to have the post office. And as I said, that's not a basis to deny the license. And at this point, there really is nothing in the record that supports a legal basis for denial of the license. And I'll just quickly address the issue of the childcare center and being within three hundred feet of the entrance to the QuickTrip. I have not read the statute as to whether a childcare center would be defined as a public or parochial school, which is what the prohibition in the ordinance and the statute say, that a liquor license can't be within three hundred feet of a public or parochial school and churches, et cetera. But that prohibition can be waived by a majority vote of the council. And the council has frequently waived that prohibition in other establishments.
Thank you, Attorney Zilvey. Looks like we have questions, starting with Alder Bedar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attorney Zilvey, my recollection of the record of that January meeting is different. I just want to clarify, I do remember that Alder Rommel clarified the reasons for denial and for the record. So just wanted to see, are you saying that that was not enough clarification? Because there was.
Well, so it was basically in two parts at that meeting. The first part of the meeting, where there was the discussion of the license, it was very much surrounding the post office, the laundromat, dissatisfaction with the way QuickTrip went about getting in touch with the neighborhood and putting information out. And then later in the meeting, Alder Rommel was reminded that the denial has to be for health, safety, and welfare reasons. And so then, those reasons were created at that point in time. So when I went back and... So when I went back and watched the meeting and looked at everything, those reasons at that point seemed to be just to satisfy the standard, when the discussion in the record was more about the post office and the unhappiness with the way QuickTrip went about contact in the neighborhood.
Okay, so then my second question for you is, my action had nothing to do, the post office was a concern, it wasn't the main concern that I heard. The main concern I heard was the density and the proximity to many locations that youth are at, like the high school, the childcare, and just the density of alcohol, which was well documented by Mr. Graz, who sent a letter to the council that is on record. Is that not something that you consider to be part of the record of discussion?
It is, but it seemed to come after the primary focus of the post office and the laundromat, and that they didn't reach out and they didn't get a feel for the neighborhood. And just last spring, there was another new license in the area, and the issue of density never came up in relation to that, I mean, literally a block away.
Is then though a fact that we consider each license on their own without like the thinking about what, I mean, should we consider this license as a privilege of a license on its, in its own values regardless of what else has been approved even two years ago? Density, density amounts up, right? So like, actually, the point that another one just went up adds to the density of the area.
I mean, in my mind, it would be a little bit different if this was a location that didn't previously have a liquor license. So it's really not adding to the density because there's been a liquor license at this establishment for years and years.
But is it the time to decide whether it is a good time to continue the sale of license when a new establishment's request of a license is removing it from an existing establishment as a completely and much higher level process? So isn't, okay, so the time to want to decrease density is actually the time where a new license is requested more easily than?
Correct.
Wanting to, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Rommel. Questions?
I'm not used to this self-unmuting. Okay, thank you. This is for the attorneys, it's Attorney Zilvey. So when I, I think it came up in another case recently with the Hy-Vee, but this question of density and alcohol licenses, is this something that never seems to be applied as part of the conversation? And I would like some guidance from your office that, you know, if this is something that is a legal standard, how should we use it and what circumstances? Should it be part of like an application process? Or, I mean, I just, you know, when I, when Joel put together that list, I think I said, oh, there are so many licenses right in this corner, but there's 35 licenses right in like a 200 feet perimeter, just around that. And then if you use the different schools as the perimeter, you can still, you can find new cases of 35 licenses. So there's several, almost, you know, over 50 licenses in that sort of general area at least, I'm just, I'm guessing. But I'm just wondering, like, if we're gonna use density as a standard, when does it ever apply?
Well, I mean, it applies in every situation, but in this case, when it came before the ALRC, again, and I think there were nine people who spoke, five were speaking in opposition because of the post office, one person was in support, and then three people mentioned density, but were still focused on the post office. So it's just the way that this all rolled out, it seemed that it was more the post office and then trying to find a reason to deny it, when I went back and looked at everything.
Well, I think.
Certainly, density should be considered, you know, and it can be discussed at neighborhood meetings or the meeting where the applicant is holding their forum, you know, at any point.
I'm just asking from the point of view of the city, like, how would you advise us as alders to inject this or as plan or as ALRC members? I know that, for example, there was somebody that wanted to go into the corner of where that little house where housing, household goods store was for a while, and it was just purely alcohol, not even food, and everyone said, no, we have plenty of stuff here in Chink's Corners. So, I mean, it seems like it's not an unknown concept that there's density questions.
Right, and it's, density has been an issue.
Alders and policymakers use this standard, because you're just saying, well, we didn't apply it here in this case, but I'm not asking that, I'm asking how, as a policymaker, if this is a valuable standard and something that we care about because the density of alcohol licenses affects our youth and our whole community's public health, how should we, how should we use this standard? And how do we, can we say now, if you had the whole list that Joel provided, and I know I'm not giving you a breath to answer, but I'll stop in a moment, that whole list of licenses, I looked at that list after you just said there was a new one. I don't know what the new one is because they're all pretty, some of them are recent, but none is as recent as the one that's before us today. And it's a new license, it's not just the same store, it's the same location, but it's not the same license, it's a new, otherwise you wouldn't even need to go through a process. You just say, hey, my ownership changed, here's like the new person that is on my LLC, and that's not what's happening.
Right. Well, density has been an issue for a long, long time with the city, I mean downtown, and obviously, as the city grows in other areas, it becomes an issue as well. And I know that the policymakers have struggled with coming up with a way to deal with density that's fair and that is applied consistently. But certainly, it's helpful if at the point of first consideration, that information is available and vetted at that point.
And so would you say there should be some standard, like if you get to this many, then it's something that it should be questioned? Or, I mean, how would you advise, I mean, I, me, some of the downtown alders have this more, but you know, in general, how would, how would we apply this kind of policy standard of density? If there is one within 100 feet in every direction, is that, that counts?
Can I suggest that this is a very important and appropriate policy discussion for the ALRC?
But Mayor, it's right before us now, because I think I made the argument when we got reconsidered, that it was a public health welfare because of the density of outlets in the area, and Mr. Graz provided us with the details that you now have.
Alder, I understand, but you're asking staff to advise you on the creation of a policy which is not before us?
No, they're saying it's a policy already, they're saying it's an existing standard. I'm asking how we apply it.
I, I'm not hearing staff say that, but Attorney Haas, do you wanna weigh in here?
At the last, when I was at the last meeting, to say why it was, when I was prompted by the attorneys to say, you know, you need a different way of framing this, than I did, that's what I used. I use, as Alder Bedar said, the proximity of other licenses, and it was excessive density. So I've already used the argument, I'm just trying to understand why it isn't applicable, even if it is not the first argument that maybe neighbors had. Anyway, thank you. Other people have questions?
Attorney Haas, did you wanna answer Alder Rommel's questions?
Well, just briefly, maybe a couple of other points. Maybe I'll beg off on the policy question for now, but I think it's important for the council to keep in mind, and Jennifer could correct me if I'm wrong, but the court, I think is gonna, if this were in front of a court, it's not just density as sort of a silver bullet X number, I mean, circumstances are gonna vary possibly throughout the city based on the type of district and what else is in the vicinity. And if density is accompanied by problems over the year with the license holder, then I think it's a stronger case. I think what Attorney Zilvey is trying to highlight for us is, you know, the treatment of applicants in recent history in this neighborhood, and particularly when you have a location, an establishment that had the exact same license and no particular public safety concerns, and recent new applications that have been approved, I think that combination of facts and that there was not, the focus of the discussion was on these other factors which are not relevant to an alcohol license, I think that's a concern that we have. We wanted to flag that, and frankly, I probably should have flagged it, you know, in a higher profile way when the, when the council was taking his vote, but I guess I was waiting a bit for the discussion to develop. And so I think that's part of the answer, is it's not density as a X number is the magic number, you cross the line, but it's gonna be a combination of factors in order for the council's decision to be upheld of its challenge.
Thank you, attorney. Alder Rommel, did you wanna come back?
I do, but I'll give it a breath and let other people speak. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still, you know, working on understanding what criteria is used for, you know, determining whether something meets a standard of being impacting the health and welfare. So is it, are there like specific things besides density that are looked at in order to determine if an alcohol license should be denied due to health and welfare reasons? Or is it, is it kind of vague and, you know, depends on the situation, I guess, if that makes sense? And what are the legal ramifications of, you know, not having a strong enough case for an alcohol license, not having, you know, health and welfare ramifications?
Well, in terms of the basis for denial, adverse impact on traffic is an element, adverse impact on the peace, quiet and cleanliness of the neighborhood where the establishment is located, insufficient parking for patrons, proximity to other licensed establishments, residential areas, schools, churches, or hospitals, inability or ability of the police to provide law enforcement services to the new establishment, and the impact of the new establishment on the ability of the police to provide law enforcement services to the balance of the community at all times. Those are some of the probably most common factors. If, and I'll use the Taco Bell case as an example, when that got to court, the standard the court looks at is whether the denial was arbitrary and capricious, and they, they do look at, in close proximity to this license and other licenses in the area, what has previously been done. So even though each license is taken individually, there is some look back at what was previously done in the area with other establishments.
That's helpful, thank you. Thank you, Alder Furman.
Mayor, I'm trying to figure out the best way to ask this question. I'm disturbed by this discussion. We had a very long discussion about this a few council meetings ago, and I know we made a decision, and then we're told that we needed to revisit the decision because we didn't, there were lots of reasons we made that decision, and we needed to make it clear that we were making the decision for the right way. I know when I, you know, made that second vote that evening, I was making the decision based on, on what was laid out in front of us, not the post office, you know, that wasn't the main thing. And so what I'm bothered by is that we didn't have this at our last council meeting, it's actually been three weeks since our last council meeting, it was supposed to be reconsidered then, and then we're actually being told by our attorney at this meeting. Can somebody explain why we didn't get like a confidential memo about this? We're literally having a legal discussion at a council meeting in an open session and arguing, you know, against ourselves. And so I'm really, I'm kind of at a loss why this is being sprung at us at this moment, and the attorneys don't seem to be prepared or have prepared us for this better.
Alder, I'm not sure who that's a question for.
Either of the attorneys that are here, can they, can they explain why this is all coming to us now at this meeting and didn't come to us sometime sooner, so we could have had more private discussions to understand our legal obligations and not have this, you know, legal advice being given in an open session like this?
Oh, the, the, the motion was made to reconsider, to put it on a future agenda. I mean, that's, that's a process to reconsider, you know, I guess it's a, you know, as, as legal counsel, we're laying out what the legal factors are. It's still gonna be a decision of the council. The council can choose to approve or deny the applicant, if it goes, if the license is denied, the applicant always has the opportunity to appeal that to court. That's not a secret, it happens in every case. And so, you know, I don't consider a discussion of what the applicable legal standards are to necessarily be something that has to be discussed in closed session. The, the, the discussion about the merits of the license were, were discussed and debated at the ALRC, and they're discussed and debated in open session, you know, at the council. We can go into closed session if we have a pending, pending litigation and you wanna discuss confidential legal advice. We don't have pending litigation at this point.
Sure, but we're being told that there, there could be legal issues, and I just, I just don't understand why, if the attorney's office discovered that sooner, we weren't advised of that, and so, you know.
Alder, in all fairness, there are always potential legal issues with any liquor license. That's, that is always true. This is one of the cases where there are very clear standards in the law for approval or denial, similar to conditional uses, and, you know, staff are trying to lay that out for you, what, what those standards of approval or denial are, so that you all can make a decision if those standards are met or not. In this particular case, the entire record up until reaching this body was for approval. The ALRC believes that the conditions were met. If you collectively do not agree with the ALRC, staff is advising you that you need to have very strong grounds to disagree with them, and that need to be based in the statutes that allow you to not approve a liquor license. And I mean, what I hear staff saying is that they believe that's a difficult standard to meet in this case. I think, you know, the questions that might be useful to hear answered at this point in time, and Attorney Zilvey has tried to do this, but could continue to, is what those standards are.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, in my opinion, I think the staff is coming out a lot stronger than just giving us options, they're telling us, we can't do this. I, I will say, I don't understand why we're gonna, we vote on alcohol licenses or have hearings for alcohol licenses at all if we can't make a decision counter to what's been made at ALRC. But I've, I think gotten the answers, the best answers I can get, and stated my point, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney Haas, did you wish to respond before we go to Alder Bedar?
Just briefly, I mean, as the mayor indicated, you know, not only with liquor licenses, but with, with. but with zoning appeals and conditional use permits, you know, Attorney Strange laid out for the Edgewood matter, some of the legal issues. The counsel made its decision, and now there's a lawsuit. The counsel still has discretion to make its decision. And if there, if it's denial and there's a lawsuit, then, you know, we will defend, try to defend the counsel's decision. But we're also not doing our job if we don't bring to the counsel, you know, our concerns about the legal standards and whether or not we think there's an adequate record, or there would be, you know, there may be some issues with that record holding up in court. And so, you know, maybe in the, in the future, we need to put that in writing for the counsel ahead of time so you have some time to think about it. But in this instance, I did not think that was necessary.
Thank you, Attorney Alder Biddar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Attorney Haas, yes, I do think with cases where there is complex and there is reconsideration, it may be useful to have a memo that lays out the, you know, the statutory reasons for denial of an alcohol license so that we can all have that before us. So Attorney Zilovey, I'm gonna go back. You read the list of reasons for denial, and one of them is proximity of other alcohol licenses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that issue of density, again, it doesn't define it like what proximity is, but it does say, you know, proximity, which gets to the issue of density.
That's correct.
And I think from my years at ALRC, that discussion of the relationship with density and health and well-being was well-established by both our public health department and by experts at UW that came before the ALRC and really talked about the correlation between density of alcohol and overconsumption. Am I correct in my reading? Okay. And then, as far as, you mentioned also, you know, just this issue of kind of fairness or being treated, you know, treating fairly compared to others. Am I correct that we have denied in, for, again, similar kind of establishments? We're gonna talk, you know, establishments that are, I'm gonna call them corner store or, you know, gas station types that, some of them have licenses across the city, some don't have licenses. I remember for Walgreens, for example, some Walgreens did get licenses and some don't have licenses because in some neighborhoods, it was okay and there wasn't much density in other neighborhoods. The same, it was same thing, Walgreens, Walgreens, just like QuickTrip, same type of establishment, but in some part of the city, the Walgreens has license and in other parts of the city, they don't. Is that my correct recollection?
Yes.
So it is fair to say that we do assess every site and its environment, and the neighborhood feedback is one element of that, but not, you know, based on the facts around that establishment?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennig McKinnney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Alder Zilovey, when you went back, I heard that the ALRC approved unanimously to issue a license. Is that, is that, am I correct in hearing that?
That's correct.
Okay. And when you went back and reviewed the tapes of that meeting, was there any discussion at that point about density or any of the factors that were brought up that caused this license to be denied? I'm just trying to figure out when the discussion came up. Did it come up, was that brought before the ALRC for them to look at this fifty and make that determination and still come forward with a unanimous vote to issue the license?
The primary thrust of neighbor concern at the ALRC was the doing away with the post office and the eventual doing away with the laundromat that's also at that location. As I said, three individuals mentioned density, but the overall thrust of the, the neighbors who were not in support was the, was being upset about the post office and arguing that QuickTrip should have done a better job of figuring out the uniqueness of that neighborhood and the importance of the post office to the neighbors and not liking the way QuickTrip went about the process.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Biddar, questions? No. Are there other questions for staff? All right, seeing none. President Carter, I think we need a motion still. You're muted.
Okay. And my hand's up for some reason. Oh, for God's sake. Okay. I move to adopt.
The motion should either be to grant or deny.
I'm sorry. I moved to grant.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there discussion? Alder Rummel. Alder Rummel, you're muted.
I got so used to you doing it.
I'm sorry, Alder.
So I, you know, encourage you to think about the density question as a standard more than you have a responsible corporate applicant. Because you know what? It's a separate question. This applicant, you know, you can nitpick at whatever, you know, what they serve, what they don't serve. But the point is that once you consider that as part of a broader picture, as Attorney Zilovey said, traffic, peace and quiet, parking, police services, proximity to other licensed establishments, including schools and teacher centers, then I think it's the proximity to licensed establishments has, should have as much bearing on your decision as whether or not this is, you know, a responsible applicant. You know, I'm not trying to say they're a irresponsible applicant. Are we a little sloppy in our neighborhood? Yeah, I'll stick with that. But I, and I think it's also, even though they're not changing the name, it's a new owner. It's, QuickTrip has bought up all the stop and goes. They bought up all the previous C stores. They pretty much have a monopoly of C stores in our marketplace. And as Alder Biddar said, it's not that everyone or every Walgreens or every similar license of, in a franchise, is going to have a license. So, you know, I think, just to say that it was one there before, therefore, there should always be one. Since they, the previous owner came, a lot more licenses were approved in that place. I mean, since I've been Alder, I would say a dozen licenses have been in Shake's Corners. And so at some point, this is a new applicant for a new license. Yes, it's at a place that previously had a license, but it's still then the question before us is whether or not the health, welfare of the community is benefited by another license in this area, or if in fact, it's licensed, this area is well-served by alcohol in all the different ways. You can, yes, you can get it off premises there. You can also go to the, like, the places that make it and buy things to go. And there's a beer place and a wine place, and everything you could imagine within Shake's Corners is available to purchase and consume alcohol. So is it just, and the thing about the ALRC and why I went down that question about the standards, because I don't recall them usually when I go, that they ever talk about alcohol density as part of their job, not the community's job to come and say what they think about a license. Because they might not know all the things that are factors. But the ALRC should know and staff should know that, yes, in fact, there are 34 licenses within, you know, several hundred feet of this license. And, you know, maybe it's okay, but maybe it's something you'd want to consider. So I, I really don't know that we do the best job at serving our community when we talk about license applications. So this is where the buck stops. Now, if you vote for it, you know, I respect your decision. I understand the fear of, that we'll get sued. And, you know, we've been sued before, so it's not unimaginable. But I really do believe this, I, maybe when I leave my last speech to you as Alder, I will talk about how alcohol has ruled a lot of my Alder life. And overlay district and Aldo, that was only for downtown. All that stuff was only ever for the core downtown. And we asked for the overlay district to have, you know, District 6638 and, nope, sorry. So I've asked to have alcohol density as part of considerations, but I've never succeeded. So in this case, I'm saying, please consider voting against this granting of the license. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I'm reminded that ALRC is not dispositive. Them voting unanimously does not determine how we should vote, even if they never at all considered density. And if the matter of density only came up later in public comments or testimony before this body, we are free to make our own decisions. But as the attorney mentioned, it did come up. It was mentioned a couple times, even at ALRC. But the point is, is that we are not bound by what ALRC says. We are allowed to rule and make our decisions based on standards. And the public health and safety standard regarding density and proximity to other establishments on this new license application is really what's before us. And if multiple factors are brought forth in sequence, and we only respond to one of them, it doesn't mean that these other factors have any bearing on our decision at all. They become extraneous if we rule and make a decision based on the standard. So I would just ask my fellow Alders not to be confused or muddled by what, by what we've heard today and stick with the standard. What ALRC decided doesn't have any bearing on what we decided. And I would encourage you to return to the vote where we denied this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you, mayor. I have a procedural question and a comment. The procedural comment is, if we do not, if this motion does not pass, is that sufficient? Or do we need to actually vote to deny the license?
Thank you, Alder. It's a good question. I'll take a stab, and the attorney can jump in when I'm wrong. But I believe if the motion fails, it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion to deny stating the reasons, the standards for denial, so that you have an affirmative vote of the council. And I don't see either attorney jumping in to say that I'm wrong. So I believe we'll go with that.
Sounds good. So, yeah, I guess, just a couple of comments. One, since there appears to be some confusion about it, I want to state for the record, both my decision last time this one was in front of us and my decision tonight, to deny this is based on the density of the alcohol locations in the area as well as the proximity to the school. So I, you know, I did not speak to this last time, but that was my rationale. And I will, I do share Alder Furman's concerns about the discussion tonight and how that happened. And I really find it inappropriate that our attorney's office is telling us what the rationale was for our decision, particularly when we put that on the record formally last time, what that decision was. So I agree that we should have, if there were concerns, those should have been sent to us ahead of time. And I do understand and I absolutely expect that we're getting good legal advice about the consequences of our actions. But that's not what it felt like to me tonight either. It really did feel inappropriate to me. And I would encourage staff to go back and just watch this discussion because it felt nothing like the advice that we've gotten on questions like Edgewood, where we're given information, we're explained what the decisions that are in front of us and the consequences, and we're allowed to make our policy decisions. So again, I am not in support of this license. And I think if somebody else wanted to make a substitute motion to deny it, that might move things along. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter.
Yes, thank you. I am going to be supporting the reconsideration. I sat on the ALRC, and I just want to say that we did listen to the neighbors and the representatives from QuickTrip. I will say that there were several things that the neighborhood was concerned with. I'm gonna echo what Attorney Zilovey said, because they did, they were concerned primarily with the post office, primarily with outreach. Then they mentioned the high school, the laundromat, the daycare, and then they ended with mentioning the fact that QuickTrip wasn't going to be selling condoms, and at least they could do that. So we got the whole gamut at the ALRC. We got the whole gamut when it came to the common council meeting. At the last common council meeting, it was referred to this meeting because Alder Rummel was not there. I think that we need to be a little bit realistic, and I do understand density. We have density all over this city. And I do think we should have a better way of measuring density, but and applying that, that reasoning to denying an alcohol license. However, Attorney Haas provided the reason, when Alder Rummel mentioned the reason that she felt it should be denied, Attorney Haas is the one that gave her the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. So it was added on to it. And I am going to, and I said all that to say, I'm going to vote for the reconsideration. And if there's a motion to deny, I'm going to oppose that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. I have no other Alders in the queue. Alder Hennig.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo Alder Carter. I think that, from my chair, what I've heard is a number of kind of changes of direction. I hear a different reason that it's being rejected most every meeting that we've attended. So I will also be supporting the reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Biddar.
Thank you, mayor. I will not support approval of this license. And my reason for that was purely around density and well-established number of, I would say, high vulnerability places around this establishment. Has absolutely nothing to do with the ability of QuickTrip to be a good establishment. They certainly have a track record of having many alcohol licenses in the many establishments they have in our city. It purely is about an opportunity to decrease density. And I think that indeed, we have not done a very good job in any opportunities that we've had to decrease density of alcohol in our city. And this is one opportunity to do it close to one of our high schools. And so it is a privilege to have an alcohol license. And that's the one and only of reason, which I think fits perfectly well within the established statutory reasons that are about the welfare, health and safety of the community. And again, literature and And again, literature and points very clearly to density and of alcohol license establishment being directly correlated with issues of health and welfare of the community. So that is the record. That is why I did it the last time. Again, I didn't speak to it. I didn't realize that we each 20 may have to speak to make the point about it, but I didn't make it, but it had certainly nothing to do with neither the post office nor condoms nor laundromats. It had to do with density of alcohol.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Haringe McKenney.
All of those things are great things to have, but that's nothing to do with this particularity.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Haringe McKenney again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to support the reconsideration and the reason that I'm supporting is that these are valid conversations and it's unfortunate that they did not come up during the decision process of ALRC. I mean, that would have been a great time to have those discussions. And there are two QuickTrips in my neighborhood I don't know about in that neighborhood, but they've been good partners in the area in terms of, you know, cleaning up the store and doing those things. And so my experience with them as an organization has been really positive. And the other thing that I want to be very clear about in terms of our legal team is that you might not, you might not like the answer, but that is their job to tell us as policymakers what we should consider. And then, once they tell us, you know, what are the options and what we can, what we should consider, it still is up to us to make that determination. So it concerned me somewhat that the, how the communication and discussion was going related to the attorneys is because they were giving the information, not telling you how to vote, but just saying in terms of a legal perspective, these are the options, these are the things to consider. And so, but it still is up to us as policymakers to make the final decision. That's what we're doing now. And so I expect them to continue to do their job because that's what they're getting paid for, to make sure that the city is, has all the information or the Alders have all the information that they need when they're making those decisions. So I will be supporting the reconsideration and I would hope that in future discussions that density is a part of the ALRC discussion, but it did not seem to be paramount. And so that's why I'm discuss, I'm, I am voting for the reconsideration and I call for the vote if I am not out of order.
Alder Haringe McKenney, I only have one other Alder in the queue, so I think we're quite close. Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be incredibly quick since I was on the record asking staff questions during Q and A. I just want to be on the record right now to say I agree 100% with what Alder Bedar and Alder Foster said and that's how I'll be voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue. The motion is to grant and so all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster.
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman.
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Haringe McKenney.
Aye.
Alder Haringe McKenney, aye. Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick.
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell.
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemer.
Aye.
Alder Lemer, aye. Alder Martin is excused. Alder Prestigiacomo.
No.
Alder Prestigiacomo, no. Alder Rummel.
No.
Alder Rummel, no. Alder Skidmore.
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney.
Aye.
I'm sorry, say again.
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Verveer.
No.
Alder Verveer, no. Alder Wiheli.
No.
Alder Wiheli, sorry, no. Alder Abas.
No.
Alder Abas, no. Alder Abus.
No.
Alder Abus, no. Alder Balday.
Aye.
Alder, was it aye?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar.
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. We have seven ayes, 12 nos.
With only seven ayes, the motion to grant fails. Alder Rummel, would you like to make the opposite motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to deny the license on the basis of health, safety and welfare and the proximity of this license to other licensed premises in the area and proximity to schools and daycare centers.
Thank you, Alder. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Bedar will second. Do we need more discussion?
Call the question.
Seeing no further discussion. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of denial?
Roll call.
Roll call is requested. So the motion is to deny the license. All those in favor of denial, aye. And those opposed to denial, no, as your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Evers.
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster.
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman.
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Haringe McKenney.
No.
Alder Haringe McKenney, no. Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennick.
No.
Alder Hennick, no. Alder Campbell.
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemer.
No.
Alder Lemer, no. Alder Martin is excused. Alder Prestigiacomo.
Aye.
Alder Prestigiacomo, aye. Alder Rummel.
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Skidmore.
No.
Alder Skidmore, no. Alder Tierney.
Oh.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Verveer.
Aye.
Alder Verveer, aye. Alder Wiheli.
Aye.
Alder Wiheli, aye. Alder Abas.
Aye.
Alder Abas, aye. Alder Abus.
Aye.
Alder Abus, aye. Alder Balday.
No.
Alder Balday, no. Alder Bedar.
Aye.
Alder Bedar, aye. Alder Carter.
No.
Alder Carter, no. 12 ayes, 7 nos.
With 12 ayes, the motion to deny passes and let's just make sure that we have Alder Rummel's full motion in the record, please. That is all of the items that were excluded from the consent agenda. So are there any additional introductions from the floor or announcements, clerk?
Madam Mayor, did you want me to just read the actual motion so, or you're comfortable already?
No, if you've, if you've captured it.
I, yeah.
Yep, thank you. Are there any announcements or other introductions from the floor? Seeing none, Alder Wiheli.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn at a record time of 8:30 PM. Is there any objection to record a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, ladies and, excuse me, ladies and gentle thames, we are adjourned. Congratulations and have a good night.
Thank you.
Claps for ID.[1767.86]